Mr. Chairman, while we're standing. Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Since we met the last time, a number of prominent people have passed away and I would like now to recognize them. First of all, President George H.W. Bush was the firefighter, Christopher Roy, local residents Wallace Babbitt, Frances Dowling, and Rosanna Welch. And in their memory, I would now ask for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our condolences to their family and friends. So first on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for the transfer of a Class II dealer's license for the North Dyson Garage. This is for Mr. Paul Pacheco. Currently, the North Dyson Garage is at 200 William Street and this is to relocate the business to 757 William Street. Is Mr. Pacheco present? Hi, sir. You can come up. Don't be shy. We're doing well. How are you? So I did see here, it looks like this was approved by the planning board. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you mind just explaining what your idea was? Like, why you want to transfer?
Well, I'm getting evicted from where I am now. So I need a new place. And now that we've got mixed use down William Street, I've had the mobile home vacant for quite a few years. So I decided to bring my office over there. As I talked with Jim, he told me that it's within the business right to have you use our dealership there.
Okay. So I actually received, well, actually, before that, let's start asking questions. So I'll open this. The way I would like to conduct this, just because there are a lot of people, is I want to give my colleagues each opportunity to ask their questions. So first, selectmen Gula, myself, selectmen Pacheco, if our town administrator has any comments, and then we will open it up to the public. So I promise everyone will get a chance to express how they feel about this. Selectmen Gula, did you have any questions?
I just want to, since Mr. Agia was involved in this, if you would make a statement relative to your involvement with Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. Agia.
Sure. Hello, everyone. So I concur with what Mr. Pacheco has said. The mobile home that he's using for an office is a temporary status. The fire chief and I will not allow that to be his permanent office location. Because he's being evicted and this was somewhat short term, he doesn't have a permanent plan in place. But we agreed, instead of a business closing, he does have an opportunity to move it to this location. And the fire chief and I did have him make some changes to what he is calling an office. It does meet minimum requirements, but just the bare minimum. So I would report back to the board in a few months to make sure that Mr. Pacheco has evolved his plans to have a more permanent solution to the office. But for now, we're satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One other question. Do you have a garage where you've got, you'll have your vehicles there? Do you have a garage where they can be maintained?
No, I'm not going to do any repairs with that. This is just for the office. I have the car to sell. I know the name of the North Dyson Garage. That's just the name of the dealership.
But you are-
Can you speak up? We can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. No, I don't have any garage on the property. I don't plan on doing any repairs on the property itself.
So the business that you have on the other side of William Street, up the road, is exactly what you're moving to this proposed location?
Right.
Same services, same hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Different location?
Yes, different location.
Okay.
I actually-
I'm sorry, before we move on that point, you have a designated garage, though, for your vehicles, correct? Like, somebody that you send your vehicles to and they ca-
Yes. And I also have a garage at my house, which is next door.
But is that the, that's the business that you would send your vehicles that you sell? If they ever needed to go over there, that's where you send them?
Depends on the repair.
But you have the, the listing of these businesses so that-
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
It depends on the repair whether it'll go out or would you rent the house.
Sure. Thank you.
So I actually wanted to read, I didn't, I had received a message from a Dyson resident. And I just wanted to share what they had shared with me. They stated that they opposed the move, and I did tell this resident that I would pass along the concern. They could not make it tonight. So I am just the messenger. She feels that William Street's speed limit should be reviewed based on the new businesses coming to the business zoning that Mr. Pacheco's leaving from. Moving a business to a property would require trucks to back into and out of, and this resident thinks it could be dangerous. They feel that William Street's not set up to accommodate this traffic concern. And the other concern that they had was how close it is to agricultural lands that will abut once it's moved. So- Did you have anything you wanted to sort of-
As far as being how close to agricultural, 300 feet mixed use, all the way down. So I don't know with any other, any agricultural land other than what would be 200 feet.
Okay. And you don't see the business as being a detriment to any sort of open things agricultural land?
No, I'm not trying to change the neighborhood. I'm just trying to utilize the business for this property after you have my license there. As far as the truck, I've had a truck at my house for 30 years. I don't plan on trucks coming in and out. Small dealership, they're not going to be coming in and out of here with cars.
So no traffic concerns?
Not as far as trucks, no.
So how many vehicles will you be storing?
Six.
Six on this property. I've viewed the property here. I'm interested in hearing from the abutters, obviously, but I'm not opposed to this right now. We have, the town, we meaning the town, has changed the use of the land there. And we're trying to bring more business in. I understand the reason why you're leaving, vacating your spot right now, and we would hope that you're able to keep the business in town. So hopefully, well, we'll see what the abutters-
Yeah, I just want to hear. I wasn't giving my opinion. That was just, they couldn't be here, so I did say I would pass along the concern. Madam Administrator, before we-
I just have one comment, and it's related to that. There's, since there's no repair on the project, there's no real danger, I mean, there's some, of like fluid or anything kind of seeping into the land. So I just-
Which was what?
Right. And so, since there's no repair on the property, it's-
Good question. All right. So I want this to be orderly. So, Mr. Higgins, did you have a question? Statement? Nothing? Okay. Sir? Others, sir?
I have some.
Others, sir?
Do you mind just name, you don't have to come up. You can just stand, name and address.
My name's David Butler. I'm a trustee for the property, one of the trustees of the 133 Williams, which is behind, behind the property question. And I first, I didn't, before I came in, I wasn't aware that the property was now mixed use. And I'm not sure how broad a range that is, but apparently a car dealership seems to fit within that. I, before I came in, I thought we're still all residential and agricultural land.
I think that this resident may also have been under that impression as well.
Yeah. But I am definitely concerned about the, the long-term impact of having a car dealership in the middle of William Street. It just doesn't seem like the right kind of business for the neighborhood. As I said, I'm one of the trustees of the land, which is eventually going to be handed down to my kids. It was purchased by my grandparents. And I certainly don't want to see a car dealership there. It just changes the whole, the whole landscape of that section.
Would you have been, if it were some other type of business, like, I don't know, an office, like a software office, you would have been okay with that?
I think a software office is different than a car dealership. I drove by the property today and there's a number of unregistered cars on the property now. I don't know what the regulation for that is that I know where I live.
There is one, I can tell you that for sure.
And it's, I, I'm just concerned about what, opening the floodgates of something worse.
So you want something that, you know, fits the character of the neighborhood?
I would. Yeah, no, it could be a craft store. Again, I don't know how broad reaching the, when the bylaw was passed that you could change it to mixed use. I don't know how broad reaching the idea was. But, you know, there's, I drove up from 44 today and there's, between Rayham, Taunton, Dyson, there's probably 40 car dealerships. Why don't we leave one on William Street?
We are gathered. We have them all.
Yeah, you have it down here with all the other cars. All the other car dealerships are.
Well, there's two down there. There's 10 altogether.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I don't mean to interject. Can you please direct the conversation here and not to each other?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, when that overlay district was approved, it now goes from the Taunton line to Shop Slot Road.
Okay.
That's the entire area. So he is within the, what got approved at town meeting, just so you know where it is.
Okay. My general concern is always, since we don't have a lot of business in town, I'm always cognizant of the fact, the symbolism of if we don't allow this, then what's the next business that's thinking about town going to say? So I haven't made up my mind, but I am thinking about that in the back of my mind. So it's a real concern that I have. Not that we blanket approve every business that wants to come to town, but I just think we need business in general. And so not approving this transfer, in my mind, is basically we're losing a business. Am I correct on that? Okay. So I want to hear what everyone has to say, though. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I just, again, it's the, the future thought of having William Street look like Route 44 or 138. I don't think that benefits, certainly doesn't benefit the residents of William Street. I don't know how long it'll benefit, long-term benefits it would be for the whole town. I-
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Ma'am?
I have concerns-
Could you mind just identifying? I'm sorry, you don't have to stand. You can just name an address.
Deanna Butler, 833 William Street. My property butts are fault. I have the same concerns that David expressed excepted. He has a ton of cars in his yard now that are not registered. In his yard, they don't have plates on them. I counted 10 cars last week. And that wasn't counting the cars that were on the car carrying truck. And I think, and I can't, I'm not sure, but I think that you're encroaching on other properties, which may not have anything to do with this meeting, but his yard is already crammed into more cars. That's only what I can come from the street. And so now to expand it to the next lot, and he's saying, did you say six cars?
Yes.
Six cars. It's just got a magnetite problem even more. And I feel like David does, that that's just going to expand. He may say six now, but in a year from now, how many will it be there and add those to the cars that he has in and out of his yard now? And as far as worrying about oils and things going into the ground, even this, whatever cars, trucks there now in his garage. And it looks mighty suspicious to me. I can't put it. But I would be very wary that there isn't that problem.
I did want to ask, since we have, we're lucky enough to have you here, Mr. Commissioner, there's been some discussion about having unregistered cars. For the record, there's a certain number, and when it's over that number, the bylaw or the regulation gets enforced, correct?
That's correct. And I've never received a formal complaint of unregistered vehicles at that location. So this obviously is warrant investigation, but until I'm made aware of it, I don't go around looking for trouble. It always finds me. With respect to repairs being done, I'm unaware of a repair garage at that location. So if that's being done and it's not on his own vehicles, then that would be an issue if it were business-related. But I'm also unaware of what's going on.
We could take a look now.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Pacheco, sure.
Those vehicles are registered. They're registered on the dealer repair. I have two dealer, two repair plates. Nothing to do with the dealership. So they are registered under the repair. You can't have the same plate on every car at the same time, but they are considered registered.
Meaning they have this, they have the registration in the glove compartment?
No, meaning that I have repair plates that go to those cars.
He moves the plates when he moves the cars.
Oh, okay. Yes, to do.
So they are registered vehicles.
So Mrs. Butler brought up a concern. Let me finish. Mrs. Butler brought up a concern about the number of cars, and you've said you're going to have six. Are we able to limit the number of cars if we approve this license?
Yes. And any expansion of cars would have to come back before you as well?
So we can make that a condition of, yeah, Mr. Commissioner, we'd also have to go back to the planning board first, because that wasn't what they had approved.
Right, exactly.
So there's a series, I just want to convey to you, there's a series of permitting levels for him to ever increase vehicles as well.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure. There's a series of permitting levels. And what I mean by that is the planning board does their site plan review, and the Board of Selectmen, as the licensing authority has to approve it. So if tonight was approved by six vehicles and he wanted to add 10 to do 16, he'd have to go through all of this process again, including notification of abutters.
Thank you, Mrs. Butler. Ma'am, I'm just going to go. Oh, sorry, you had a minute.
I just want to clear something off. In my own mind, the comment that he made about having the cars technically registered, he only has two plates. Only two of the 10 would be registered. You can't put two plates on 10 cars. And those plates are not to be considered. The cars that, once he attaches a plate to a car and drives on the road, then it's registered. It's sitting in his parking lot. It's not registered.
The building commissioner is aware of that, and he is aware of how many unregistered vehicles are allowed. So that is something that he will look into. But again, it sounds like we can decide as a condition on the approval of this transfer of the license to limit the number of cars. Madam Administrator, I feel like you had something.
I have something, yes. So the dealer, excuse me, the repair plates are for, you know, this is a business. So if he's working, he acquires a car in some way and it needs to work, and he has the ability to fix it, he can put on those plates. The repair registration is different than like driving on the road registration. So it would make sense to me that he has multiple cars lined up, sitting there without an actual plate on it, but like one or two have them because he's actively working on them. So I think my recommendation is, once you hear from all of the comments, that we take this and push it to our next meeting for a final approval. We'll give the building inspector some time. I'd actually like to take a drive out there, because I have some ideas on some things. And we can come back. But by all means, I think everybody should have the opportunity to speak.
Yes, Mr. Pacheco.
First of all, all due respect, we're not talking about 767 right now, tonight. We're talking about 757. So you're talking about postponing this, which needs to be redone before the first of the year. But we're on a totally different subject. We're not talking about 757. I'd like to just talk about 757 tonight. If anybody has a problem with 767, they can go to Mr. Agia and raise their concerns.
It is within the board's purview to continue this based upon comments that came up tonight, and that's all I was saying. I understand your concerns.
I just want to go around. Hi. Did you have anything?
I just have a question.
And then just, so name and address.
Is the vinyl sign business coming with it as well?
If you read the post that you posted. She put a post on Facebook today showing what the meeting was about tonight, but also listed that there was a sign shop. I don't know where she's getting the information about a sign shop going over there. I've applied for a permit to move my car dealership over there. That's all I really feel like talking about tonight.
Yeah, agreed.
Is there a sign on the garage that's not a sign shop? Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
There's a sign on the garage, North Dyson Garage. I thought it was like a vinyl side business as well.
In addition to-
It's on the same end as the garage, so I thought that was part of this business as well.
Apparently, it's not going to, it's not going. Just the dealership.
Just the deal license.
Mr. Gale, did you have anything, any questions, comments?
No, I'm choking as it is.
Mrs. Bidlag. Okay, ma'am. All right. Ma'am, did you have any comments, questions? Mrs. Lucroy, nice to see you.
Well, I don't know if everybody knows or whether there's a different business at 767. So we're talking about North Dyson Garage, but they're talking about the business at the next property. So just so we're clear on that.
Is that property also owned by Mr. Pacheco? This is just for my information.
You should ask him, but yes.
Thank you.
But it's a different business.
Correct. And we're not discussing a transfer of, I get it, different property. Did you have any questions, comments, sir?
I just, I have John and Dara's, I have about a 15, 12-month here. I just had a quick question. In terms of where you're planning to put the cars, like, you know, for display, like, it's not going to be obviously within the right of way of the roadway. And there is, I'd say, pretty quickly on that road. So I just was kind of concerned on how you're planning to do that. So there's no turning issues or anything like that, sightline issues.
You guys have the plant, the site plan?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner. Sure.
So the site plan that was approved by the planning board requires all the vehicles to be behind the stone wall, adjacent to the mobile home that you see there, which is going to be used as temporary office. So there'll be nothing, no vehicles outside the stone wall. They could be directly behind the stone wall. And everything is behind that wall, which is out of the right path.
Is there a sign associated with that?
I haven't got a permit for a sign, but you would be able to put a sign up based on what our bylaws allow.
Did you have another question?
No, my only concern with the sidewalk on there quite a bit. So I'm just concerned that there's going to be a sign or something blocking as I'm coming up that side as you decide.
Mr. Commissioner, if he needed a sign, would he have to go to the zoning board for that?
No, he wouldn't.
Okay.
Because the overlay district has allowed uses, so he can't permit you to put a business sign there. And it could be in the right of way. It has to be on his property. William Street is actually a very wide right of way. So you probably find that it may even be a little bit of a setback off the stone wall on the interior side that the sign would have to go.
Sir, did you have any questions, comments, concerns tonight? All right. Hi, ma'am.
Hi.
Did you name and-
I did have a little something off my head. Something that you know, maybe 11 William Street.
Sure.
Well, three houses down. I just wanted to reflect my thoughts, so I did have something off there.
Absolutely.
As a lifelong resident at Dyson, I fully support commerce in our town. However, I'm not in favor of a car dealership in the garage on William Street. And in areas so fully settled with homes, we currently have businesses at the end of William Street. We have Route 44 several miles from the proposed location, and in the area that's much more conducive to business. We also have a farm stand and local nursery on the other end, which, in my opinion, keeps in line with the country feel of our town. My concerns of this type of business in our quiet neighborhood would be for the safety of the children. The increase in traffic in this area would put the children waiting for the exit of the bus at risk. The traffic on William Street has steadily increased over the years. I've seen firsthand the dangers of simply waiting for the school bus in the morning. I'm afraid this business would increase the traffic for the children at even greater risk on that street. I'd also like to voice my concerns with the increased noise, pollution, and potential negative impact on the land. I'm sure with a six-car car lot and a garage, we come large equipment, different chemicals on the premises, which could affect the land, the land surrounding it. And I'm pleased we don't do this type of business in this area. It's like opening up a can of worms, so to speak. I'd like to keep business in town where business makes sense. I'm speaking out to protect our neighborhoods from strip malls and duck and donuts right next door. I just want to continue to preserve our culture, historical and agricultural heritage. And I guess lastly, I just wonder how you feel about a car dealership or a garage going up right next door.
I have Reese's Garage right in their mind, but it was always there, in all honesty. I do have, I do have one question, I guess for the building commissioner, and this, we can't possibly know this, but why do we expect the traffic to increase if this business was already, it's already here?
I don't think you'll see an overall increase in traffic. You may see an increase in traffic at that location. And I think that's a concern of the residents that I'm here, because you can't have patrons coming and going, as opposed to the normal ingress and egress by a homeowner. So I think, I think that's an increase in traffic that's being discussed.
Do we expect any increase in noise? I think we've talked about the pollution. Since he's not going to be doing the work there, then it shouldn't-
Right. So the only time you would get a noise, a potential increase in noise would be if there was repairs down at that location, because then vehicles can be started, shut off, you know, when you're troubleshooting them. But just a typical auto sales usually is the patron comes in, checks out the vehicle, takes it for a ride, and ultimately purchases anything they like. So that type of traffic would increase at that location. But overall, I don't think the traffic on Wade Street would increase.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, sure.
In regards to the traffic increase, there has been a big traffic increase. The Berkeley Bridge, when that became not a one-way, when that became accessible for trucks, it's a shortcut now for traffic coming up 44 right by their downtown street. I don't think that a six-car lot is going to increase traffic that much. And like you stated, we ought to have the lot down that road. So if people are coming from Somerset, they're going to go by that location to go to where I am now.
All right. Thank you, sir. Sir, did you have any comments, questions, concerns? Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
I'm going to stand if you don't mind.
Oh, I, no. Sure, don't mind at all. Just name and address.
Can I just step out?
Of course you can.
Thank you. So my name is Aileen Farrell. I live at 745 William Street. For folks who have been around this town for a while, it's the Smith Home. I have bought the property on the north side and on the east side in a significant way. I have lived peacefully with this trailer for many, many years. And one of the concerns that I have is it's going to change. And one of the, Paul was gracious enough to call me and let me know that he needed a place to put an office to keep a business going that supports his family. And I, we talked about the concerns that I had for this property, and directly how it impacts me. As I started hunching around, because I wasn't notified at this meeting through the regular ways, I had to go find the posting through an email to the town hall. And I hope everybody got their registered letter, but I did not. And I found out there was a site plan. So, you know, I've lived beside this trailer, again, for 20 years. Probably for the past four years, there have been two cars at one time or another, always two cars, in and out, in and out. I didn't know what they were doing, where they were going, you know, but it was quiet. When I saw the site plan, there were eight spaces. And I said, oh, shoot. And then I said, you know, my concern, which has been mentioned about your property, Paul, is, is, that was my, my nightmare, is like, oh my God, your driveway is coming next door. And I, I have a hard time, like, thinking about myself living next to this property, kids stopping by, getting out of their cars, walking around the property, looking at the cars. Nobody's in the trailer. Nobody's watching the house. I'm sitting next door by myself, and I'm looking out the window. That scares me. The other thing that scares me is there's a porta potty behind the trailer. My understanding from a previous building inspector was if this property wasn't used for five years, nothing could be done. And that was because it was the nature of a trailer, and it was a grandfathered property. I don't understand why he told me that, but I was really surprised when there was a, when Paul called me and said, this is what I'm going to do. Paul also told me that it was going to be a minor site plan, a minor site plan right now, a major site plan in the spring. I don't know what that is. I don't know how that's going to impact me. So for me, I don't know where we're going with this. And I don't think the town does either. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was, for me, yeah, that the, you know, it's been a, you know, again, I've been here for 20 years. It's a residential part, you know, area. Everybody around us is residential. We have special needs residential homes. So other than Paul's business, we really don't have businesses. This is not a home with a business. This is a business on the property. So, so the porta potty is an issue for me. I look, my guest room looks right out on it. I look, my guest room looks right out on it, and I have bought this property on both sides. I have a fifty percent exposure of the toilet, um, and I don't know how long that's gonna be for. Um, I don't think it's fair that I have to have a fifty percent exposure. Um, I think if, if we're gonna keep the porta potty for there for any particular time, you gotta present it to the world. Let's all share, let's all share in the site. Um, so I really do believe that it should be moved to the side of the trailer, with a quarter presented to the William Street, a quarter presented to Paul Pacheco's. I'll take a quarter and a quarter on the trailer side where it's locked. Um, let me think, what else?
Can I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, now I'm getting curious. When you spoke to Mr. Pacheco, um, was the porta potty discussed?
No, there was no porta potty there. I think the porta potty was there because the whatever's, what, again, what I felt like, oh my God, is this gonna be a lifelong issue? Um, is this an issue of why the building inspector told me that nothing could go there? Nobody's been there for five years. What's the health of the septic system now? Are we gonna replace that septic syst-? Is he gonna replace that septic system? Um, we have a problem with drainage. That's the other thing we talked about. Paul has a, Paul, it pulls on his side, it pulls on my side, and it pulls down the back of my yard. I'm using my yard about two months out of the year, because I sink into it when I walk around the back and I garden. I had trucks that came in last, uh, last year or something like that. I had two big pine trees blow over, they sunk right in. They weren't even sure how they were gonna take those trees out. So if we have impervious, what do you call it? The driveways.
Impervious surface?
We're gonna, or we have snow removal. Where's the snow gonna be removed? This is not in the site plan. The porta potty's not in the site plan. The barrier, from my view, to this trailer is not in the site plan. So there's a few missing pieces. I did a lot, I did ninety-one pages of that bylaws today. You know, and I'm like, oh my God, we don't have this, we don't have that, we don't have lighting, we don't know where this is going. So I obviously oppose it. I, you know, and I want Paul, I, I don't think it has to go there. I think you can find another place that's better, sue it for it. Um, the other thing is, is if anybody comes off of William Street, you know how fast it is, the car behind you. I have to pull in really quick to my driveway, because someone is on my tail. And that's the same thing's gonna happen at, at seven fifty-seven. Um, and I'm sure it happens to a lot of other people. Um, so I'm concerned about, you know, traffic, people on the property, um, that nobody's gonna be there. Because this is not a primary business. This is something he does for family and friends, and I respect that. But, you know, people, strangers on the property next door to my house, I'm not comfortable with.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for sharing. Sir?
Uh, I, the only thing I would have to say is...
Just name it, name an address.
Yeah, my name is Mark Scott, I live at seven twenty-four William Street. Um, I did, really, hey, you mentioned how, you know, you wanted to bring business into the town. But like one of the other ladies mentioned, I mean, people move to Dyson to not be in a commercial, a commercial type town, right? Like, and I grew up in Brockton. I mean, if I wanted to live in a town with, that was commercialized, I just wouldn't back to Brockton. You know what I mean? So, did it kinda, you see what I mean? Like, I don't understand the idea to, um, you know, wanna bring all this business into the town, because people move here for, to get away from that, not to, do you see my point?
Yes.
Well, there's also multifamily apartments in Brockton, and everything's a lot closer together. But we're, we're getting off the topic. Public hearing is not my personal opinion. I haven't made up my mind yet.
It's not about personal opinion, it, it's about, it, it's about, you have to recognize the fact that people come to Dyson to be in a rural residential area.
I understand, sir. I moved, my family moved from Fall River, I get it. But I just don't understand what this has to do with us hearing the permit.
Um, but what it has to do with it is because you're gonna have a car dealership with a sign that says, you know, Fred's Cars, right in the place where there's all residential areas, that's what it has to do with.
I agree, but the residents voted to make it mixed overlay, because they wanted to bring business into town.
Uh, Patrick Martin, I'm on Montero Drive. And, um, you know, I, you know, I've met Paul many times, he's a great guy. But I just don't think it's, you know, I moved here, and it's a residential street. And, you know, I'm looking at, I'm paying a lot in, in taxes. And I can't get an abatement on my tax right now. And it's gonna bring down the value when we've got commercial, um, business right across the street. So I just don't feel safe in my, my, uh, my neighbor said, I mean, it's just not the street. That is not the street for, for business.
Mm-hmm. I, what I, I feel like we're getting into a tax discussion tonight.
Well, no, it all comes into play, that's why we're all here.
I understand.
We don't want that on that street.
I understand.
So there's, even what Mark said, I mean, it all comes into play, that's why we're, we're all here.
I understand.
You know, it's important to us. We spent a lot of money, we spent a lot of money on taxes, and it's, this all is important to us.
I understand, but as businesses leave, you need to raise the...
Business guys are not gonna bring that much in taxes to this business. I'm seeing, I'm part of the CP for, I, we're talking about small dol- small dollars as far as what's coming into this town compared to what we gave to this town for. So you can disregard that. This is not what I consider bringing business in for the benefit of the town.
I'm not disregarding anything, but we can have a difference of opinion on what we think bringing into the town. I live on a street, correct.
But you live on our street.
No, I don't live on your street.
Well, then, then we have a little more say than you do.
That's fine. That's why we're listening to what you have to say, but that doesn't mean I'm going to agree.
You can disregard anybody that's not on your side.
That's not ac- not what I'm doing at all.
That's the impression I'm getting.
Okay, you send your piece, I understand. Yes, ma'am.
I think they just mean the coin feel of this Dyson town. We love that. And I'm all for commerce, I'm all for business. Where it makes sense, where it works. And I think some of us feel like right there in the middle of our little neighborhood that this particular type of business doesn't exactly work.
But this bylaw was approved by the townspeople.
It seems like a lot of us miss that.
Well, we have, we have an annual, we have a, excuse me, I'm talking. We have an annual, we have a, you interrupted me, I'm gonna interrupt you. We have an annual meeting every year, and we vote on this kind of stuff. And this publicizes the one we're gonna be voting on. The townspeople wanted to bring commerce into town to lower their taxes, and we voted and approved this.
And I understand, apparently I miss that, as some of my neighbors have, unfortunately.
I can't, you can't go to every meeting.
The warrants mailed to every house in town.
I would say, I don't think it's really fair to say that, because we don't know predictably what is the potential for William Street. So for somebody to say absolutely nothing, I mean, it basically came out, William Street was gonna be zoned, period.
Well, that's what people voted on, yes.
I understand that people voted on that, but people didn't know what, that they were voting for a dealership at seven fifty-seven. They didn't know that when they voted that. They might have said, yeah, there are places on William Street where things, businesses are most appropriate. When you look down the street towards the manor high, you don't see a car for sale. You see little tiny signs. I went by there yesterday, it says auto sales. I said, oh, there's another one. But I didn't see a car. You're gonna be seeing cars right on William Street. That changes the character of the neighborhood. Value, I know, doesn't really matter around here, that people value their land. But it does change the, the way we feel about where we live. I know everybody around me takes really nice care of their property. This property's been sitting here for twenty years with, twenty years. I don't know how long you've owned it, Paul, but it hasn't been maintained. Okay? That's not our fault, that's the owner's fault. The owner has to move this property because the pot shop is going in on two hundred William Street, where his current location is. Okay? That's why we're having this conversation. If that pot shop wasn't going in on William Street, then we would not be discussing this. The, the trailer would still be sitting there.
Did you have anything you wanted to say, sir? Did any, sure, sir. Yeah, we'll do, we'll do round two.
Yeah, wow. Um, the lady back there, I don't remember her name, um, mentioned, uh, in the site plan is a porta potty. Is that the porta, does that porta potty exist now, or is that part of the future plan?
She was saying it's there.
It's there now.
I know some of you in this room know me, some of you don't. I would never allow a porta potty to be a permanent solution to the problem. This is strictly because he's on a short time string. Fire chief and I bet, we came up with what we thought was a compromise to get it temporarily set up. If I do not get a, a more permanent solution or a plan moving forward in the few months to come, I will certainly report to the selectman, and at that time, we could revoke his license. So this is just a temporary solution. It does meet the bare minimum requirements, and I would never allow a porta potty to be a permanent place for patrons to, to go to.
Can I just ask again? Sorry, sir.
If, if you don't mind, along the, along the same subject. If, i- i- in order, um, is there a permanent septic plan? Or is permanent storage disposal plan in place before this even goes, goes forward?
The timing would not allow that to happen. So, and as I understand it, this license has to be renewed by the end of the year, or it gets turned back into, to the town. So with that said, none of that can take place. However, during the next few months to come, those are all things that Paul's gonna have to do in order to make good on the fact that we've given him an opportunity to keep his business open. If he doesn't, and those of you who know me, I will tell the selectman, and we will revoke his license, and it'll be that simple. But, you know, those are the questions I can't answer, that's up to Paul, as to whether or not he moves forward. But we do have recourse if he doesn't to, to revoke his license.
Can I just ask why I was told that, that, uh, why a building inspector would tell me that the property, there's no, nobody understands that?
I think I wasn't around, and I don't know what he said, and I've never worked with that gentleman.
Yeah.
My guess is that he was talking about grandfathered use, but since that time period, town meeting voted for a mixed-use district there, wiped that out. So grandfathering is for a pre-existing non-conforming, is what we call it. It means it's existed, and we're kind of just dealing with it. And once it closes for, I thought it was two years, so five years is new for me, but with two years, then it cannot be a car dealership in this example. But that goes out the window because of this, this new zoning that took place before my time here.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like?
Yes.
I'd like to comment on, I've heard a lot of people say, the residential area. That was taken away from us when the town voted mixed-use. We don't have a residential area, we have a mixed-use area. The mixed-use area, when I went to the building inspector, he looked down the list, what's business? What is allowed, what's not allowed? Retail, car dealerships, I'm within my rights of putting that. I understand that they have concerns. I think there'd probably be a lot more people here if I was putting up a McDonald's, or CVS, or supermarket. I mean, those are all businesses that are allowed there too. So I believe I'm the first one to exercise this right. And if we're not gonna go, move forward, why did we put in a mixed-use? It's clearly in black and white that I am allowed to do that. You can clearly do, put your stipulations, how many cars, and have to come back, and Mr. Agia has put stipulations on me. And like he said, if I don't live up to it, he's gonna come there. As far as traffic flow, the Berkeley Bridge, that increased a lot of traffic flow. Uh, as far as me not maintaining the property, there hasn't been anybody in there, but the lawn has been maintained. When I bought the place, the lawn was not maintained. I've always maintained it, and Irene had come over to me one time and asked me about a tree. I took the tree down, Paul, I pulled it in. I've tried to be a good neighbor to every neighbor. The land out back, I bought from the end. Now, I say, they think a car lot, that taboo. Well, what about retail? What can, what on that list would be acceptable? I'll bet you if you go down the whole list of everything that's supposed to be allowed in a business use, the crowd here will say, no, I don't want that business there either.
Well, I wouldn't speak for the crowd if I...
Right, I'm just assuming, I shouldn't. And my last thing is, as Melody said, you could postpone this, but as Mr. Agia said, we're in a time crunch here. And I've got inventory, if I don't have a license renewed, who's gonna pay for my inventory? If I get denied tonight, then what happens with the inventory? I just let it sit somewhere? Can't sell it, can't sell a lot of license. Most of my business is hosted. Most of my business is done with the auction. It's a, it complements my car counting business. And the things that were said about my house, my other business, that's not what we're here to talk about today. And I'm sure that if anybody else wanted to have a business in their property, they'd wanna exercise their rights. So my last thing is, I'd like to ask the board to vote on this tonight, do not postpone, because we're running out of time. I've already invested money. I, Mr. Agia has asked me to, to make compliance. He asked me to put the porta potty, I did. He asked me to put it behind the building, I did. He calls me twice, he's put it on the side, I will. Whatever he asks me, I'm doing. And the board does have the ultimate, so make sure that I'm doing what I say I'm gonna do right now. And if I don't, you gotta pull the license.
Did anybody else in the audience have anything else they'd like to add, ask?
Well, I just would like to say that I don't see why, how Mr. Pacheco's time constraints, should be the burden of anyone else.
Sorry.
To, to come up with the right decision. Um, it seems to me that a porta potty is not, um, any, a solution for a business. You don't open a business's doors in a porta potty. Those are there for emergency purposes if something rates. What if this all happens, and Mr. Pacheco gets his permit, and the property doesn't pass a, 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 a perk test?
He revoked the license. They revoke it. They...
But the, the legal battle can go on and on and on.
No, no. If tonight, the stipulation, I mean, there's already a stipulation. We cannot have a porta potty as a permanent solution, and Mr. Pacheco understands that, I know that. Um, but if he fails to hold up his end of the bargain, which I'm assuming these stipulations will be placed based on this vote, we take action.
What is that plan?
Needs to build a permanent facility, but, I mean, that's out of my realm. I mean, we would give him a timeline, we would have to give one based upon these comments. This, which is really the, my basis for recommending to delay. Our meeting is next week, so it's a week. I, I'm a pro-business person, I don't wanna delay it, but I feel that we could take some of the comments here and come up with some fair and equitable things. So that was my basis, not to hurt you in any way, and to...
Could you tell me some of the comments that are pertinent to this meeting to moving the license? Not the residential area, not all that.
That, that, like, a fence or like some sort of thing? Um, I'd like to speak with the building inspector about the porta potty issue. I would like to put together a timeline, like, those are just my comments, but...
Could you speak with him now? Can you ask questions now? Because I'd like to have this voted on tonight.
I'll defer to you, if you'd like me to do that, I can.
I suspect I'm not gonna be voting on it tonight. Um, what are your business hours gonna be? I haven't decided them yet. Would that be something you would have to consider?
We need to license that. Do you have an idea of when you would come up with that?
Come up with it right now if you want.
Okay. I'm wondering if the board would...
Excuse me, can I just say one last thing? There really does seem to be so many unanswered questions to grant, to, to voting on that. I know when we built our house, before we did anything, we had that everything right by the book. And it just seems like, you know, I know Paul is, you know, I know he has a plan, but I just think you're cutting in a little more slack than you would someone that spent a lot of money building my house. And I, I, I think there should be a concrete plan before we break a rule to, to, to put a business on, on, on William Street. I mean, that's just my take as a Dyson president.
Ma'am?
I understand.
Madam Ministera, I don't disagree at all with anything you said. You're a hundred sixty percent right. But I think this is more an issue of he was evicted, I'm just going off how the situation was presented. He was evicted, so that's why we are here tonight, sort of, kind of, you know, hasty to it.
Fine, I was, I was in a rush to get our house built. I, I live with the, my brother, and we both rebuilt a two-family house in Dyson with a handicapped brother. And we had to have everything in writing before this, before you guys would give us any, any leeway. In fact, it took us over two years to get our street approved. And because everything had to be by the book. So I think we have to hold everybody in this room accountable to say things that I had to, and everybody else has to. So I don't see the rush, rush to judgment, and I'm sorry that he, he's got a limited timeline. I dealt with the same thing. We don't know what can happen, you know, if things don't follow through. Because we don't have the time to follow through to make sure the septic is right, or to make sure the porta potty's not in the right place. So I think as a committee, you have responsibility to say, okay, is everything set? That's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah, and I think, and I appreciate you for sharing that. What I will say is clearly, we need to balance your concerns with what Mr. Pacheco is asking for. So I would feel more, so let me ask you this, Mr. Pacheco... So, I would feel more, so let me ask you this, Mr. Pacheco, is not taking a vote on this tonight negatively impacting your ability to do your business?
Yes, yes, it is, because...
Please explain.
Mr. Agia has put things in place that he wants me to get done in a timeframe. I am within my rights. The town did vote to have this mixed-use. It clearly states that I can. If it's denied, when it be denied tonight, because I want to have time to get to legal counsel, because somebody's gonna pay for all my inventory. Somebody's gonna pay for me going out of business, when I own a business, this property, I'm within my rights, and people come in and talk about the residential area that we don't have.
I understand.
They talk about their house and the permits that they went through.
I understand.
I understand all that. It has nothing to do with this meeting. This meeting is to move my dealership over. I've spent money already to come to a compliance, what Mr. Agia and the fire chief have come. And I don't see a reason for it to be delayed. People have been notified, everybody's here right now. And as everybody said, if I don't meet up with my end of the bargain, then you're gonna take the license away. If you're gonna deny it, deny it tonight so I can get legal counsel.
But the only issue I have...
I'll ask it. I would like to ask the board, I know Ken doesn't wanna make a vote tonight, Nancy, you, I would like one of yous to make a recommendation you vote on tonight.
My only issue, Mr. Pacheco, is you speak a lot about rights, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I was one of the people who voted for this to be that mixed-use overlay. My issue is, there's nothing in your rights that says that we have to do this tonight before we have time to address their concerns. Their concerns are legitimate, just like your right, right to this business is legitimate.
Is it legitimate to say that we're in a residential area? We're in a mixed-use area. We're not in a residential area.
We're not disputing that, Mr. Pacheco.
Okay, then.
We understand that.
All right, so then what's the discussion?
You can read the map.
What's the discussion? We're not in a residential area.
We're having the discussion.
I'll address this to the building commissioner. Has any board commission or any officer in this town expressed any objection to relocating this business to 757 William Street?
Not just by that, I don't want you to...
Are you confident that if we acted on this tonight favorably, that Mr. Pacheco would be sufficiently monitored so that he will comply, or else he won't have a license?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you know, I'm not happy or disappointed in here either, but just so everyone knows, too, I've been inspecting dealerships, not just in Dyton, but in other communities for a very long time. It's not uncommon to see that in auto dealerships, especially since the advent of the internet, where a lot of people don't even have vehicles at their location. But the state requires them to have an office, and so on and so forth. I was very clear with Paul when he came to me that if I would, the fire chief and I were to allow the situation to be temporary, that it would truly be temporary, and he would have to be in constant contact with me to make sure that he was filing with the border health for a perk test to see if the septic could be cited, deciding what he was gonna do for a permanent building, and starting the permitting process. So yes, there would be oversight.
I guess my question is, and I feel like the answer is, it doesn't. If this does not negatively impact your business, and my thoughts are, if we delay this a week, that we're more likely to get it passed next time, because we will have possibly addressed the concerns that the people here have tonight. So what is the negative for that in your mind?
The negative part is, I've already spent money. I spent money to send letters out to all the neighbors, I spent for the newspaper, I spent for porta potties, I've built it in there, and I want time to have legal counsel, because...
But you're assuming...
Well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming, no, I'm not assuming, I'm going off of what you're telling me. You're telling me that we have people that have concerns about a residential neighborhood area. Well, we're not in that area. We're in a mixed-use area. So now you wanna go out there and say, "Oh, you're right, you guys look like you have a residential area." But you don't. It's mixed-use. So when comes the next meet? And what changes? What changes from tonight to the next meet?
But that's my point, though. You've already spent the money for notification and everything else, that's already been spent. So if this continues next week, it's not possible.
If it gets denied, it gives me one week left.
If it gets denied. We have some concerns, I'm... We don't even know what your hours are gonna be, and I think that that's a pretty relevant...
You have to know that, yes.
I will meet by hours nine to one o'clock every day.
But they, I just wanted to, they understand that this is no longer residential, they are still residents, and I've said things that you probably didn't agree with tonight. They are residents who have concerns, which makes it important, regardless of what the zoning is. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Does it make sense that I can do retail there? That they wouldn't want McDonald's? Name one of the businesses there that you think that they would like.
We're getting in hypothetical, we're not having it in hypothetical.
My comment on this, just, it is a right for you to locate there, but it is a privilege to have a license, and this board is determining the license. I think that it is wise to take what is, this is the whole point of a hearing, to take what is said tonight. Jim and I work very quickly together. I promise you, tomorrow we'll be sitting down and we'll be figuring this out, we'll probably take a ride over and have a solution to present for them on Monday, they can mull it over, and on Wednesday they'll take the vote, and it'll be a lot quicker than this. I think that it is wise to wait. I think that it is not detrimental to your business.
Now, we go a week later, and if it does get denied, that puts me a week behind.
Okay, a week behind with what?
What am I gonna do with my inventory and all my license?
With all due respect, sir, that's not our, we didn't tell you to buy it, we didn't tell you what to do with it. My thought is, you're gonna store it at the location on William Street. That's what I think is gonna happen.
Where I'm being evicted from, I now own a piece of business property. It's clear that says you can have that, but you've got a lot in that area. So I'm not breaking any laws.
I'm not saying that you are. That's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that you are.
We are spinning our wheels. They, yep, you can, I'm sorry, we're gonna do something after this.
This is a committee. You've mentioned at some point a building.
Right, he needs, if he's going to operate a building, I mean, operate a car dealership, he needs to have a structure with a bathroom inside of it.
So how big of a building, and we're talking how big of a sign, what kind of a sign, that's gonna impact the same place?
Signage is regulated by the zoning bylaws, so all of that would be handled by our zoning bylaws, which haven't changed in a while.
Not for signs.
The size of the building has to go through site plan review, I, right, so he'd be back before the planning board, which I don't believe that could be waived as a minor site plan. That'd be a full site plan, and you'll all get a notice for that hearing with the planning board, when that's the time.
Again, tonight's meeting's not about a building, it's about me becoming compliant. I can make that mobile home compliant. I don't have to put up another building.
Only if I allow you to.
But we're talking, we're not talking tonight about buildings.
But it's related, sir, because you cannot operate with a porta potty as your bathroom facility.
Correct.
So it's related.
Correct, and the mobile home has been cutted, because the last tenant was in, is destroyed. The plumbing is still there, it's got a Title V septic system, and the toilet can't be fucked up.
So is that the plan? Are you gonna, is that what's going to happen?
I will let you know what the plan is once I know when I'm approved, or not approved. I'm not gonna make a plan speculating on whatever.
That solidifies my...
That's exactly what they're saying to you. They're not gonna give you permission on what it is.
We don't have to waste more time discussing hypotheticals. Please don't let this be a hypothetical.
No, it's not. No, I just want, I think a positive spin, or not even a spin, is that everybody should know Northside Garage received the license 33 years ago. We've been on William Street for 33 years. It has not grown much from the first license I got there. It's not gonna be master loaded, best, yeah, super...
Nissan or done.
Whatever, yeah. Yeah, it's been on William Street for 33 years. Northside Garage has always complied with whatever has needed to be done. When we first got it, we had to make sure we got the bathrooms and did all that, so that's the positive side.
So, so I just, one more question, because I know when I was doing some of my research, in the documentation that comes out of the town Dyton, it talks about enhancement of a property and improvement of a property. I'm not hearing that.
Which document?
I, I...
I understand your point, but which document?
I don't know, I mean, I bet it, in the documents, that, I don't know if it was, it's not the zoning, because the zoning didn't talk about it, but it could even be the planning, the...
The subdivision rules and regulations.
It might have been, yeah, but it was repeated over and over, that this should really be an enhancement, you know, and again, I, it scares me that, you know, it's gonna be a trailer with now with six cars in front of it. And, you know, where it's currently located, you wouldn't even know it's there. I know if you get 10 cars, you gotta put shrubbery up, you know? You gotta block it.
Do we have...
Not show why six is any different.
Do we have any other, from the audience, anything else? Ma'am?
It's gonna be open from nine to one, who's gonna staff it?
But we didn't, that, oh, did you, I'm sorry, Mr. Pacheco, you said nine to one?
Yes.
Okay. Monday through Friday?
Seven days. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said every day.
He said, "All day."
Monday through Friday, we do need to clarify. Monday through Friday, nine to one.
Yes, definitely.
It'll be staffed by employees.
So it won't be a lot where people can just drive in and look around, nobody there to attend them, attend to them?
There will be a lot that people drive right in.
Just a moment, Mr. Pacheco. It's okay.
It's okay.
If you get more used car sales, we'll be not there. People don't like to be pressured. They don't like salesmen to come run out as soon as they drive in. They go there when you're closed, if they're interested, they call you, they make a point. That's true.
So, final comments, Selectman Goulart.
Quite frankly, I'm ready to act on this tonight, and I would vote in favor, because I have not heard that he's in violation of any of the town's bylaws. I understand the residential situation. Folks, what do you think's gonna happen when we get the two businesses in? You and a lot of other people are gonna be complaining about traffic. We're not here to talk about those businesses. He's been dislocated because we have a couple of new businesses coming in town that the people in town voted to allow to come in. So we will, you know, if they get their licenses and all that, they'll be here. I have not heard that any board has said no. I am fully confident that the building commissioner, whether he has to get involved with planning again, or zoning again, and certainly the border health are going to make sure, he's in comply with everything. If he's got a septic problem, border health will shut him down instantly. He might, border health and the building commissioner might be racing to get there, and who's gonna do it first. But I really believe, under the circumstances and the informations that have been presented here tonight, as a member of this board, I don't have a leg to stand on that I can say honestly, he is violating anything in this town that would prohibit him from relocating. I think there's more on the side of the town that says, "Okay, Mr. Pacheco, if this is granted, you already know all of the conditions that you have got to meet, and rest assured, you don't meet them, you will be shut down." I also understand his concern that if we delay a week, we're running into the most important holidays for most of us at the end of the year. He's gonna want legal representation. He's gonna have to find out what he can do. I don't really want this to turn into a court fight, and I honestly believe, a week from now, we will not have reason, legal reason, to deny him the right to move to that location.
I actually agree with everything that my colleague has said. However, I do think that what I heard tonight does merit discussions between the town administrator and the building commissioner. It is not, other than you possibly needing legal accounts, your opinion, that's what you said, not me, what I will say is, that's not gonna be necessary, because I do plan on supporting this, okay? She already said she supports it, my colleague, Selectman Goulart, so to vote, it passes. But what I'm going to say is, I do believe we owe it to these people, all of them here tonight, who took time out of their lives, skipped their dinner to come here and let us know how they feel, and not send us an email, to at least address what they've said tonight. Some of it, we can't address, because it is mixed-use, and we all know this, I'm not gonna go into that. But, it's not gonna negatively impact you, I plan on voting for it, but I do think we owe it to them to get their concerns addressed.
Can I just say something?
Of course you can, Mr. Pacheco.
I can agree with you, if they have legitimate concerns. Concerns, the porta potty, being seen from your house, you go out there tomorrow, you're gonna see it. That's it. So what we talked about tonight, everything else that we've talked about, it's not gonna change next week, it's not gonna change when you go out there. It's there, it's now. So, you can go out and see that they have a residential area, that you have a mixed-use place. So what I'm concerned is, what are you gonna find out by going out there? That they're right about what? Right about that they have a residential area? That you know they're wrong. It's a business, it's a mixed-use area. What is it? You're gonna see the porta potty, that's there. You're gonna see the work that I've done, that the inspectors have done. What could you possibly, what concern do they have that warrants me not getting that? Could you possibly find out?
Mr. Pacheco, a concern does not have to be right or wrong. We don't use those words to describe a concern. It's valid, because they came here and they let us know how they feel, and I, as a representative of everybody, balancing your right to operate your business in a mixed-use district with their, I'm not finished, with their right to come here and let their representatives know how they feel, I owe it to them, just like I owe it to you, and I heard what you said tonight, I heard what they said tonight, to see if there's anything that we can do with our town administrator and our building commissioner, to at least give the appearance like we hear you, and we are going to...
Yes.
...talk about it.
I understand, I was only asking...
I understand.
What concern is it that you need to find out?
I have a list of 11.
Could you just...
Yeah, sure, okay. We have, what's the long-term impact?
Long-term impact, we're gonna have a dealership there for a long time.
Yeah, that, Mr. Pacheco.
That is, that is...
I'm gonna finish the list. Doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood, too many cars, thickly settled homes, safety of children, traffic, noise, pollution, and drainage. I think that warrants a conversation, just a conversation. I'm not, I've already let you know I support this.
I know, and I'm not trying to...
And I plan on supporting it next week, too.
I, I agree, I agree with those concerns. Traffic, it's not gonna increase. I don't know if you're gonna go out there Monday and count cars and say, "Well, I think it's gonna increase," or I don't. I think that decision could be made tonight. I think all the concerns that you listed there, we can talk about right now. I really do.
We've, Mr., with all due respect, we have spent an hour and 35 minutes talking about it. Mr. Pacheco?
Just for the record, it's an hour and five minutes.
Right.
May I make one quick comment?
One moment, sir.
It seems to me, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say...
We'll go back to the fourth time. I just wanna make everybody understand that although I have the same last name, I am not related to Mr. Pacheco. I happen to get my ancestry.com information today, DNA today, and I check, and check, and check, I am not related to Paul Pacheco. I said at the beginning that I'm supporting, supporting this. I do think we need some clarification. I see no harm in waiting a week and having a town administrator, as well as the building inspector, go over to the property. I am supportive of this, I'm supportive of business, bringing business into town. I own, what everybody here would prefer, a bakery, but that's not gonna happen, I don't think you're gonna put a bakery there, so...
You can't do that, Mr. Pacheco.
You consider it? No. So I understand, they're concerns, I am supportive of this. When we passed the bylaw, nobody said everything but car lots.
Correct, they said everything except the...
Please. You're digging, and you shouldn't be digging.
So, I'm just gonna make a motion that we, we can hear from Mr. Butler, if you want, one more time.
Then you make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion that we continue the hearing, so.
Yeah, you, sir?
Thank you.
You have the final word.
Seems to me that the, the burden of proof of what Mr. Pacheco wants to do is on him. And we shouldn't be left in the dark. As exactly what, and what he plans to construct, the type of business, the hours, how it's gonna be staffed, none of that should be up in the air. And we, we shouldn't all be, we shouldn't have to all be concerned about what's, what's going there, but we are. And we would like to know from him what is proposed to be there. And then if it varies from that, well then, something can be done.
Well, I know it can't, pretty stretchy they were out running it by the building commissioner, so there is a process in other boards, they're out of process, he has to go through, he just can't put a building up there next week.
Yeah, it can't be a mobile one day.
It's just a building. It's a whole, you know, the whole business, whatever business is going to be conducted there. How, how is it gonna happen? You know, is it gonna be, is the trailer gonna stay there indefinitely? The fact that a business is moving there with a port of body is my worry.
Well, I think we're gonna get some clarif, we're beating at that horse, but I think we're gonna get some clarification, that's why we're asking for a week.
And Mr. Pacheco, I feel weird speaking in your right, like, right there. Mr. Pacheco had said that he didn't want to tell us the long-term plan until the license was going to be approved, so
That's fact.
I told, I, I'm agreeing with you. But hopefully, the point is, maybe we'll get some clarification on what the long-term plan is, because that's also sort of a concern of mine, which I mentioned tonight, before we meet next week. So, I'm gonna make a
Sure. Well, I'd say, a quick question, so are you granting, let's say, you all said you're gonna grant the license, so you're doing basically a non-compliant structure at this point in business.
No, they're, they're talking about continuing the hearing till next week, so that all of these concerns can be properly vetted, and we can work with Mr. Pacheco together and provide a solid plan for all of you and for the board of select.
Sure, so I'm gonna make a, yes, I'm gonna make a motion, this hearing will continue to December nineteenth. It'll be the first agenda item on that list in
Seventy-thirty PM.
Seven-thirty in public shit, if you're interested, come to the next meeting. To get clarification, if I have to get into the, what the issues are, to get some clarification on
Well discussed.
I will step down and second that motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to make a final comment. The last time I saw this number of people in this room was when this town had thoughts of taking all the streets at Dyton Rock Park as town streets, and I strongly opposed it. I understood how those people feel, having grown up in an area with dirt streets. I understand what you're dealing with. I also understand that my vote has gotta be based on facts. There have been no violations, there has been no board or commission or anyone else object to this. There are terms and conditions that he's got to follow, and I am totally confident that the appropriate boards, commissioners, Board of Health, anybody in this town that will have a say in his operation will make sure he complies. But I also say to you folks, putting this off till next week, I'm not giving you an appearance that I hear you, I hear you, I understand you. But I'm also looking at what I am obligated to do, and there is nothing he has done that anyone has brought forward that's a violation. And I will say to you folks, putting it off for a week, my other two colleagues have said they're gonna support it. The conditions that will be discussed with Mr. Agia with a site visit and the town administrator are not gonna change what you're dealing with. And I don't mean this as a threat, but wait until the two new businesses open, because you, you and a lot of other people are gonna have major concerns about traffic and things. So, that's where I'm coming from, and I am gonna support it next week unless something happens that nothing has been brought forward tonight. I've got to follow what the town's rules and regs are, and I do hear you, but I don't wanna give you folks false hope either. So, I will vote against moving this another week. But I just want you to know where I'm coming from.
And nobody's giving you false hope, because we already told you we were voting for it next week. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? And by the way, if those two businesses come onto William Street and you have an issue with traffic, come to the meeting. That's why we're here, we're here to represent you.
Yeah, I don't know why we're talking about the other industries, you know, business that's coming in, that's gonna be a lot of traffic. There are two places that opened up, there's gonna be a third place opening up, that's why they have a lot of traffic, because there's three, but by the time this new place opens up, there's gonna be fifty, seventy-five.
They will have to drive as far.
I hope, I hope they have a lot of business, but I do honestly don't believe it's gonna be a traffic issue at all. And if it is, the, the contractor, the person who has this business has to pay for the traffic, for the police department and everything else to take care of it, so, anyway. Nothing to do with this motion, so.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? The ayes have it, that motion passes, sir, we will see you next week.
Thank you very much.
December nineteenth, first item on the agenda.
Thank you, and thank you all as well. Seven-thirty PM next week, December nineteenth. Thank you. Okay, so we, that was lengthy, which is fine, we love, I love having public here, so I'm not gonna complain. If it's okay with my colleagues, I do plan on doing time limits for the remainder of the items on this meeting's agenda.
Great.
We probably should have did.
No, no, because things like that, when you have a public hearing, I feel like, and you come and you take time out of your life to show up, you have something to say, and you're gonna be heard.
It's just that we gotta curb repetitive comments, that's all I'm saying.
Sometimes you don't know where someone's gonna
Yeah, no, I get it.
All right.
Okay, Town Hall renovations.
Yes.
I don't have anywhere to go, so please, take care of William.
Actually, I'm glad you said that. Can we skip to the community compact update, which is actually under my report? Because Ms. Bidlack is here for what's that?
Bidlack, you've been busy tonight.
Yes, she is here.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item Six C out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. So, I'm really excited that you're here, you as well, how are you, Mr. Napolitano from Serpents?
Back again, Havel.
He'll never
You're always welcome.
Have fun. I am really happy you're here, I know you all have been very busy. I didn't actually expect you to be here, but again, super happy. I mean, the reason is because I had asked the town administrator a question. Now that we have submitted our Green Communities application, it has given me a little more time to look into other things, and a lot of the sort of land-related grants through the state, they do have a prerequisite on the open space and recreation plan, so that's why I had asked, like, where we're at, because I'm not micromanaging, I'm not, you know, Ellen, Mrs. Bidlack, where are we at in the process?
No, it's fine.
But I did wanna get an update.
Yeah, no, it's fine, thank you very much for moving the agenda.
Yeah. It's a good thing you sat there, it's thrown my mind.
Should I stand up, or?
No, you don't have to.
Um, yeah, so I just wanted to let you know that, um, a couple things we've been doing. We've been going through different planning documents that the town has, like the old open space plan, the zoning bylaws, and the master plan, going through the goals and that kind of thing that were previously set, and figuring out what, um, what goals haven't met, and what we need to follow up with the other boards and stuff, and find out whether or not those goals are still viable, and those kinds of things, and propose projects and stuff like that. So we've been doing that so far. We have met with Conservation, Parks and Rec, and the Planning Board. We have yet to meet with the CPC, we want to touch base with them. And then we've also been talking about meeting with the Stormwater Committee, because there's a section in there about upcoming challenges that we'll face, and Stormwater, it will be applicable for global warming challenges and that kind of thing. So, those are two places we've yet to talk, two groups we've yet to talk to, but Bill Napolitano's been working very hard on the maps and that kind of thing, and I understand that those are in good order and coming along well. And we're hoping that we will have the, is this the initial certification for July, two thousand nineteen?
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, the grants, the, the grants you were talking about. The Division of Conservation Services, they certify your open space plan, and right now, I, I just to give kudos to Ellen of the group, you know, you had that little breakup there in the middle with, we had some, a different chair before running it, Ellen picked it up, she's done a wonderful job with the group. And your open space committee is doing something that's very unusual, but very, very thorough. We did the community survey, we've done all the research, like Ellen said, looking at all the old plans, see what goals and objectives still stick. So we've been through everything, the master plan, and when we go to these different boards, which is what your group is doing differently, they said, we have a community survey, we crunched all the numbers, we got the results, we found out with the public one. Then we said, we looked at the master plan and all the other plans, and there's recommendations in that specific to boards. So let's go to the boards and formulate questions based on what the public has said they would like to see, and see if it's still in the goals and objectives and the recommendations, what boards do. And it's been great, we've kind of put together the twenty questions type of approach, all the boards have been very forthcoming. You know, they've invited us in to speak to them, and they've all answered the questions. And it's, it's brought up a lot of good points, because a lot of them said, yeah, that's been on the table for years, and I don't know why we didn't address it, or no, we've moved beyond that, and here's what you're looking at, and this is what the public wants, here's how we can maybe do it. But DCS will certify your open space plan when it's done, we're at the point now, I think, once we get these last two boards in, we can put together the action plan and the final goals and objectives, and that will get you to a point where you can put out a draft plan for your review, everybody's review. The grants, DCS grants rounds come available in July. So your plan should be up to the state, you're reviewed and certified the one before then, and then you'll be eligible for land grants, park grants, land and water conservation grants, things like that.
It'll open a lot of doors.
It'll open a lot of doors.
Land games.
Yeah, exactly.
And by, by integrating it with your other community compact, which was your Stormwater Committee, and I'm glad that you're here tonight, because I was, I was going to tell you that Serpents and some of the other partners, Resilient Totten Watership Network, we're gonna grant, and as part of the grant, we, we tied, not really tied, but we said we would like to target work with Dyton, Berkeley, and Free Town, do a comprehensive bylaw review, looking at Stormwater, comprehensive Stormwater review. And I know, I helped you write the scope of work for the Community Compact, so we're available to start working with you to address those things, too. And that, that will get you more money.
And I'm sure our Stormwater Committee will, will be willing to
All right.
We have a meeting tomorrow, obviously, we're not gonna be talking about this, it's a very, it's a very, I think we got one item on the agenda. But, when you're ready, if you get in touch with Rosalyn Grassy, our, uh, the office, office manager, and ask Roz when the next meeting is, and tell her you would like to be on the agenda. And we'll get it, we, we average roughly once a month, we're gonna meet this month, but I get some information that I've got to get some feedback on, so we're meeting tomorrow. But certainly, we're willing to work with you.
Yeah, so it sounds like we should probably meet for February then, we have our, we're gonna meet with the CPC in January, and then if we meet with you guys, hopefully in February sometime, they'll give us chances, chance to comment questions and then figure out.
And what I can do is, if you'd like, because we got that grant from, it's the Southern New England Estuaries Program, to come and work with the town, I can meet with you maybe in January, and tell you what we can do, how we can do it,
Okay.
and go over your plan of work from Community Compact, and that way I can help the Open Space Committee formulate some questions.
Good, yep, yep.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan. You're, as I said, you're always welcome, Bill.
He's the guy with the plan.
The man with the plan.
And for people who don't know, Mr. Napolitano has been helping us with just various things in town for many, many years. He's been instrumental in the Totten River Stewardship Council, Totten River, and also assisted us in forming an ag comm, and right to farm, and the Community Compact in general, which allowed us to do all those other things. And as you can tell, he's also gonna be getting called in Stormwater.
And he has a chaplain, he's on the twenty, he's the guy in that Totten River trail.
Very good.
Absolutely.
That's actually a great segue, because the other part of the Community Compact update is the Stormwater part, so I'm just yielding the floor to you, Selectman Goulart, if you, I know that you've actually made quite a bit of headway in this Community Compact.
Yeah, what we're, well, let me just say, we did spend the grant money, I do have the invoices, so I can give you the information, so we can notify Mr. Cronin, DOR, that we spent it. We put a little money of our own in, but that was for our education program, and we still have handouts. What we're talking about, and again, this is not tomorrow's agenda, but we're focusing on watershed management, because when we were in, we were Battleship Cove, for the, you were there that day, and they informed us through EPA, that's the next thing, is watershed management, because I remember saying, I don't know anything about watershed management. But, we're going to be looking into that and see what we have to do to be in compliance, and see what kind of programs that we have to do. So, right now, we're wrapping up details on the NOI, we submitted it in time. There were some questions that they asked for, samples of some of the stuff we used. And so tomorrow, we're gonna be hopefully wrapping up, answering the questions they have. But, Stormwater, as I've told people from day one, is never gonna go away. It just keeps expanding and expanding, and now it's watershed management, so. But I will mention, somewhere between two thousand seven and ten, I remember attending a meeting at the Old Town Hall, when it was the Grange Hall, and Bill was there, and the topic was getting the Totten River, well, it was getting designation for wild and scenic. And the question was, what do we do about the Three Mile River, because they had talked about making it scenic and wild down to the Haridate. And I remember saying, no, no, it should go all the way to the Totten River, because that's the most navigable part of the river. But anyhow, it all came together, and the entire Three Mile River was tied into the Totten River. But, so, like you say, he's been around forever. Not that you're old.
So, you're admitting that.
Oh, yeah, you're admitting it.
On camera.
But it's fine.
Sure, Mr. Higgins. Name an address, I'm sorry, Mr. Higgins.
Four hundred Lincoln Avenue. You mentioned potential for grants for Stormwater Grants, for Parks and Recreation, and you're using grants for other land use, fully examples of other different use type grants?
Land and Water Conservation Grants to maybe secure more future potential and existing water supply grants. You know, of course, land is crucial to water supply. Also, Recreation, Open Space, where you could do, set aside conservation areas, open space areas for potential for recreational trails, things like that, but there's a land grant program, a park grant program through DCS. One is recrea, more recreation oriented, the other is land conservation oriented, and the land and water conservation usually goes to help enhance water supply. But there's gonna be money here for plans for flood storage, things like that.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, no, sir, those are our updates, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Yes, we are rocking and rolling, and once those are kind of completed and sent up to the state, we fully intend to embark on two more compacts. So, there we go, that's it.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Bidlack and Mr. Napolitano, absolutely, we appreciate it.
You too, every holiday.
If you don't mind as well, I was supposed to announce this, and before we get too late and lose too many viewers, the Board of Health is kind of counting on this. So, the Board of Health is rolling out a new program, Free to the Town. You'll get this mailer, everybody in Dyton will get this package with a pink bag, and it is part of their curbside textile recycling program. The Board of Health has contracted with Waste Zero to provide curbside textile recycling. Homeowners will be provided with a mailing to explain the program as well as pink bags. The collections will occur on the same schedule as the normal trash recycling pickup. Simply put, the pink bag out at the same time as the trash recycle bins. The pink bag will be picked up and replacement bags left for future use. Some of the items will be processed and resold at thrift stores, others will be used for rags or insulation, while others reused and reprocessed abroad. This means that it doesn't matter what condition the items are in, as they will be shredded if not able to be sold. Items collected include clothing, blankets and comforters, coats, drapes, curtains, shoes, and more. Additional bags beyond the one received will be available at the Board of Health. And there's no limit to how many, like, you can put fifteen bags out there if you want. Not only will this program save Dyton money by reducing the waste stream, Dyton will also be paid for each ton collected. So, more on that, but postings are going to be up on the website, on Facebook, through email and all that good stuff, but the Board of Health asked me to announce that, so I'm sorry.
That's great.
No, that is, that is fantastic.
And it's a free program to the town, so what I think is, this company sells us and makes it money, but we can provide this to our residents free of charge, which is nice.
So if it's okay with everyone, I have a suggestion for the remaining of the agenda, it is already nine o'clock. We are going to, if it's okay with my colleagues, move to award the bid for the highway garage roof, and anything else that
Mr. Ferry's here for.
We would like Mr. Ferry to speak to, and then we're gonna move to the presentation on the proposed Town Hall renovations from our building commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item Eight F out of order.
Before we have, before we have a second, Mr. Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I know, this gentleman is a, is a sovereign town, he's taken up very early at work, and we're probably deferring to
After, after the award for, okay, we can do that.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes, Mr. Ferry.
Actually, can I take it?
Yeah, who, whoever.
So, it's, we're not really, he hasn't really been involved in it, we decided to take it, it's actually the building commissioner and I worked on this. So, we went to town meeting, we requested Bunny to fix the roof at the highway garage, it's been leaking for quite some time, thank you for your patience, Mr. Ferry. We got five bids, which is actually exciting for me, it just means a highly competitive market. And we did some due diligence on the lowest bidder, and we are recommending together to award to Mike's Construction Company out of Dudley Mass in the amount of twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars.
How much money was approved?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Good work.